Good evening, Ojai residents. I'm David Marin with the League of Women Voters. Tonight, we're bringing you a forum for the candidates for Ojai City Council, Districts 1 and 2. Want to let you know that we are going to be recording this, and we also have Spanish language translation through the captions, the closed captions, if you're able to use that. We have all five candidates with us for these two districts, and at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce the President of the League of Women Voters, Ventura County, Kathy Morgan.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for being here tonight. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 with the mission of educating a new group of voters, women, who were granted the right to vote nationwide with the passage of the 19th Amendment six months later. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization committed to providing voters with factual, non-biased information, and as such, does not support a particular candidate or political party. The League today continues with the mission of empowering voters and defending democracy by registering voters, providing information about the candidates and the issues, getting out the vote, and supporting fair and transparent elections. The candidate forums are an opportunity for voters to hear from the various candidates and to get the information they need to make an informed choice when they vote. Attendees to the forum are invited to submit the questions they wish asked of the candidates when they register. The candidates have not been provided the questions in advance, and each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the questions posed. We are glad that you are here tonight to hear from our candidates. We hope that you get the information you need to make an informed choice when you vote. At this time, I would like to turn it back to tonight's moderator, David Marin. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. We are going to begin opening statements in just a moment. We'll do a minute and a half for opening, and then every other question and closing statement will be one minute only. You may be wondering why we only have candidates for District 1 and District 2. In District 3, there are only two candidates running. Andrew Whitman did accept our invitation for tonight's forum. Renee Roth, the other candidate, declined to participate due to other plans. The League cannot host a forum with only one candidate in a district. So that is why we are not able to bring you anything for District 3. So with that, we'll begin with our first candidate, Leslie Rule. When you're ready, Leslie, you have a minute and a half.
Thank you. Thank you very much, League of Women Voters, for sponsoring this forum. My name is Leslie Rule, and I am running for City Council in District 1, and I am for a livable Ojai. That is an affordable, healthy, and financially stable hometown where community and connection are prioritized. I have a 10-point plan to get us there, but given the time constraints of this particular segment, I'm going to hit on three of them. The first is fire and drought resiliency. We need to be preparing for the future by addressing the realities of climate change now. The second is affordable housing, ensuring that our long-term residents and our local workers can afford to live here if they so choose. And the final one I'm going to address is diversifying business. We need to support and recruit local, non-tourist businesses. We need to minimize the negative aspects of conventional tourism on Ojai's people and places. So thank you very much. Those are three that I am addressing. I plan to address the rest as the evening goes on. You can also find them at my website, which is lesliforojai.com. Thank you very much. I look forward to addressing these in more depth.
Thank you, Leslie. Our next candidate, Michelle, when you're ready, you have a minute and a half.
Good evening, and thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and supporting the democratic process. As we are approaching the last few weeks in this election, I have been so inspired and ignited by the people in this community who have shared their knowledge, their expertise, and their lived experiences of being here over the years. It has been really encouraging, and I am running for this position to protect and preserve the special place that we all call home. I have both relevant and recent experience for this position. I am a mother with a young child going to a local school here. I am a business owner and as a marketing consultant have helped launch businesses right here in Ventura County. And because of where I am at this point in my life, I am exposed on a daily basis to a variety of experiences with our diverse and intergenerational community. I am a regular participant and patron of our vibrant businesses and believe that the combination of my lived experiences as well as my professional experiences, which include nonprofit work, and also as a policy advisor for a congressional candidate and founding Sustainable Ventura, a digital platform for emerging climate voices, that I'm uniquely positioned for this role. I hope I have the opportunity to serve and help in the creation of a thriving and vibrant Ojai for years to come.
Thank you. Leslie and Michelle are running in District 1. We'll now shift to District 2, and we'll hear from Catherine.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. I'm Catherine Donlin, and I am running for Ojai City Council for District 2. This is really important to me because I am a mother. I was born and raised here. I'm a mother raising my children here now, and seeing some of the shifts of our community really opened my eyes to some of the things that I wanted to be a part of and help us refocus on, which includes making our city a more inclusive place for families again. I want to do what we can to reinvigorate our public schools and our housing market to make it more affordable for those of us who live here, for people who want to live here and be a part of our community, raise their families, be a part of this beautiful city that we call home, and the wonderful environment that we have and the feeling that we have here. It's really important, and I'd really like to see us be able to work together by listening to our residents, listening to our community, and knowing what we need, what we want to see, and being able to be that voice. I would love to be that voice for our residents and our community very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next candidate in District 2 is Rachel Ling.
Thank you so much, and thank you for giving us this opportunity. So I've had the opportunity, running for office, to talk to so many of you here in Ojai, and I've heard similar themes emerge, and that is that we want to protect and preserve the spirit of Ojai that is the small-town community we all love. We all know that growth and change are inevitable, but people who came before us made wise choices about the way that we developed, the way that we grew, so that they could preserve the integrity of our community. I heard a quote from Deborah Felmuth through a radio show, and she talks about the word salam in Arabic, which is the word for peace. And she says that peace is not the presence or the absence of conflict, but the presence of oneness. And that, Ojai is an international city of peace, and that is what we need to bring our community together to solve some of the challenges that we face. The biggest challenge of our lifetime is climate change. And in particular, this county, Ventura County, the temperatures are rising faster here than anywhere else in the lower 48 states. So that affects our water supply, that affects our risks of fire, and it affects the future that we're leaving to our children. And so climate is my top priority. But I am a peace builder. I've built a business over 17 years, bringing people together. So I have experience, grassroots organization, and my time is up.
I have to stop you there, Rachel. Thank you. Okay, Randy, you're up, and you have a minute and a half.
Well, thank you all, and a minute thirty is hard to get everything in. I understand that. I moved here 28 years ago, and I got busy. I got my son enrolled in youth football. I coached youth football. I moved on to high school football for 14 years and coached there. I moved on to the Recreation and Parks Commission, and I chaired that for seven years and was on it for eight years, and then I moved on to City Council. Here are some of the things that I've accomplished in the last eight years as a City Council member. The first thing was that we passed the Complete Street Measure. The second thing that we did, we did a cultural resource ordinance. That took three years of my time to get that ordinance completed. We've recently reestablished the Green Coalition with funding. We got onto the Clean Alliance, the Clean Power Alliance, real quick under our watch. In 2019, we created the Solarize Ojai Committee, and we started working on how we could solarize our community in a beneficial manner that started with city structures and hopefully with school board structures. Probably the two most important things we passed was Measure C, which gives us the money, gives us a lot of additional money to fund the street repairs and the infrastructure work that we need, and we also passed the cannabis revenue. So that's what I've done in eight years.
Thank you, Randy.
Two more of it.
Thank you. We'll begin our first question with you, Michelle. Let's talk about something everybody thinks about probably in the morning and evening, and it's the traffic in Ojai. Michelle, what do you think are the solutions that'll help to fund the transportation or to resolve some of the transportation problems? What are your strategies to deal with traffic in Ojai?
Thank you. I look at everything through the lens of sustainability. For me, traffic calming or relieving traffic means that we invest in our pedestrian and also bikeways. There are currently plans to expand bikeways. I would like to continue, and I support making them safer. I know for one, I take my daughter on my bike every morning to school. So beginning to prioritize those alternate modes of transportation, I think are an important way that we can begin to solve our traffic problem. I also think that we need to include artists in this conversation. Art has a way of really slowing people down. There are experiences, there are sculptures that we can make, that are things in our community that we can put in place to slow people down and encourage them to be pedestrians and to also use their bikes.
Thank you. A reminder to all candidates, we're now doing one minute for every answer. Rachel, you're up next. Share with us your solutions to traffic problems. Do you think there's enough funding out there to solve these problems?
I think there is funding. I think it is available. I think we can be really creative in terms of how we come up with solutions. So I agree with Michelle about boosting our walking and bike paths. I also propose having planting trees to shade those walk-in bike paths so that even when temperatures are rising and it's really hot in the summer, that people can still use those without as much struggle. I also like the idea of having electric shuttles. Our trolleys are all moving to electric, and that is a really good resource for us. But I think also, in terms of this kind of bleeds into the topic of tourism, and finding ways that we can encourage any tourists who are coming to this town to use our shuttles, to use our trolley. And then finally, I'll also say that parking enforcement is something that really isn't done a lot. And so we have people parking for hours and hours and sometimes for the whole day on our valuable streets.
Thank you. Randy, same question to you. Your solutions for dealing with traffic?
I think we ought to put gates on all four entries into the community. No, I'm joking. These, you know, I've been on council for eight years and obviously here for 28 years. And if you're driving downtown on a Saturday or a Sunday, it's on you if you want to drive into all of that confusion and that mess. First of all, there's a lot of alternative routes to get through town or around town. So it's important that we recognize that there is a way for the everyday person that lives here to commute. The other thing is I want to touch on what Michelle did and what Rachel did, and that's what Complete Streets did. Complete Streets was the guidelines that was created by a 10-member community team, and they identified all of the streets and all the bike paths and all of the different ways that we could commute throughout this community. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. What we need to do is look at our manual and actually start working on it.
Thank you. Leslie, your solutions to dealing with traffic in Ojai?
Well, there's really two different types of traffic that go on that cause the congestion. Excuse me. One is the tourism on the weekends. So that is a particular type of traffic, and I would absolutely support some sort of mechanism whereby cars were parked outside of the downtown district, and people were either shuttled in or an electric bike was provided or a scooter, as they do in other towns where everything is electric and you can move around that way. I certainly would also encourage walking, as you know, the residents of Ojai do. The second type of traffic is the commuter traffic, and this is the traffic that you see from 7:30 to 9:00, mostly through downtown in Ojai Ave, but they're moving quickly, and it's unsafe. And it's the same way the commuter traffic for people coming back or through Ojai at the end of the day. And a lot of this has to do with people coming into work, which does lead into workforce housing, and I'm hoping to be able to speak to that as we move on.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay, Catherine, we'll wrap up this question with you. Share with us your strategies for dealing with traffic.
I think everyone touched on some of the main points. The weekends are busy because of tourists. But I think for me personally, in my experience, 10 years commuting to Thousand Oaks to work, my parents commuted to Carpinteria for 20 years to work. A lot of this is commuter traffic. And one of the big ways we can address that is if we can make housing more affordable is I feel like the housing issue can resolve a lot of this. If housing can be more affordable, people aren't going to be living at a cost burden. They can accept jobs that are in town and actually be able to work where they live as opposed to having to commute outside of Ojai to work there. And then likewise, people working in Ojai are living in cheaper areas outside of the city. So you get it both ways. So if we can address the availability of jobs and the cost of living here, I think that could go a long way to addressing the traffic.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. We're going to stay with you, Catherine, for the next question and talk about housing. We have quite a few questions on this one. I'll start with something as far as share with us your plans, your strategies to deal with housing, and does that include using city-owned land for affordable housing? Would you be in favor of that, and what are your ideas for solving the affordable and accessible housing?
I think we should use what resources we have available within reason. I don't think we can see every piece of land built on, but we do have to provide something because the spaces that were traditionally available for families, a lot have been purchased by investors or people as second homes. So we're losing that stock, so we have to provide something. And I would really like, and it absolutely needs to be in an affordable range, and I would like it to be affordable for families especially and single people. I think using city-owned land or vacant buildings that are in mixed-use areas. But I think the main issue is that it has to be affordable. It has to be accessible to low and extremely low incomes. But we do have to address it, and if that means building small communities, then absolutely that's something we need to explore.
Thank you. Leslie, same question to you. Your ideas on dealing with the housing shortage? What can you do for affordable housing, accessible housing? Would you be in favor of using city-owned land?
I would certainly be in favor of using city-owned land. The first thing I would do would be to make an inventory of what city-owned properties exist and what are the buildings on them. So then we have an idea of what is possible. The second thing, I am a great believer in ADUs. It is a homeowner-based housing stock. It is built on existing properties. It is by right in California. There are free plans available on the Ventura County website. This is something that can be up and running in three to six months, providing housing up to 1,200 square feet by right over the counter. So I am a big proponent of that. In the end, I also think, though, that we need more long-term housing trusts that the city partners to provide, like, for instance, the American Legion is coming up, that big space on Ojai Ave is coming up for permits to build affordable housing. The city needs to be part of that and support it.
Thank you, Leslie. Michelle, same question to you. Your housing ideas and using city-owned land?
Thank you. Again, I believe in looking at everything through the lens of sustainability, and that means supporting ideas that will contribute to diverse and equitable, a diverse and equitable housing market. I love the idea of ADUs, but I think that the caveat needs to be that if we are to provide a seamless pathway for people to build those or even subsidize them, that they provide housing for full-time employees, seniors, or full-time students, and have that kind of restricted to those terms. I also agree that we need to create a committee specifically tasked with getting unbiased essential data, data points, so that we can make informed and intelligent decisions based on the needs and the facts. I would also love to explore the creation of a secondary housing market, which would provide a pathway to homeownership for local income-eligible borrowers.
Thank you. Randy, please share with us your ideas about solving the housing situation and using city-owned land.
You know, I said this the other night, affordable housing is an all-hands-on-deck issue, and we need to look at all forms and all types of affordable housing, from tiny homes to ADUs to development-created opportunities through public, which isn't brought up a lot. But public-funded facilities are the facilities that are built by entities that get federal grants and things of that nature. And they're the entities that are going to build the low and the very low housing which this community needs. So again, it's all hands on deck, and I think that what most of us don't include in our conversation is a lot of the school board property that's available that, due to the lack of students, there's an opportunity to actually do workforce housing on a lot of those sites.
Thank you. Rachel, we'll wrap up with you.
Okay. Well, I think first of all, the definition of what is considered affordable by California state law, many people, families, would not consider this to be affordable. So what's considered in the range of affordable housing is for someone, a single person, making $70,000 a year. Now, a lot of teachers, I was raised by a teacher, a school teacher, I'm the oldest of five. My dad would not say that that was affordable. So I believe that we need workforce housing. I also believe that we need a committee that's tasked with assessing our needs. And we don't even know our needs because of a lot of our workforce, as Catherine said, is coming from out of town because they can't afford to live here. So I'm in favor of coming together and finding solutions. ADUs are one option. I think also there are nonprofits that, if we partnered with a nonprofit, then we could get state and federal funding, grant money, to buy and renovate existing properties. So we're not taxing our resources.
I have to stop you, Rachel. Thank you. Randy, we'll start with you on the next question, and all candidates, just a reminder, keep your eye on that league timer so you can stop on time. So Randy and all the candidates, we talked about housing as if people were planning to buy. There's another element, those who wish to just rent. And does the city have enough apartment buildings? I believe Ojai hasn't built any new apartment complexes in quite a while. Randy, the city's housing element document shows over 1,000 renter households are rent burden. So share with us your ideas about dealing with the rental community.
Well, it's, you know, we're a community of 7,500, and I believe 3,500 of that 75 actually own a home, which means 50% of this community is renting. My son rents, and my daughter-in-law, and their two children rent downtown. Rental, to me, rental properties are... God, you know, I'm trying to put this in the right words so I don't offend anybody. But there's a lot of people in this community that own a lot of homes that they consider themselves good people because they own them and they're renting them. And in turn, these renters are paying for these people's multimillion-dollar futures. I think rental property, one, we don't have enough of because we don't have a large housing inventory. That's probably the biggest reason we don't have rental property.
Thank you, Randy. Time's up. Catherine, same question to you with one minute. Share with us your views specifically relating to renters and the availability of homes and apartments for rent.
Yeah, I definitely don't think we have enough apartment buildings. And that is one aspect, but I feel like when we have a housing discussion in general, I feel like, and I know a large part of our population, you know, the average age is like 53, a lot of single people. We're not talking about families. Families need space. And so we're talking about homes, and like Randy said, people own multiple homes, they're renting them out at a premium. And some of these people aren't even individuals, they're just investors and really just making money off of our community. And those are people who could be, you know, those are homes that could be rented to families at a reasonable amount. And those are families who can send their children to our public schools. And so I think it's just really important to look at what we have and what we need. And we just, we don't have the stock anymore because it's been bought up, and people are living the best they can.
Thank you, Catherine. Rachel, same question to you about dealing with the rental situation.
Yeah, I think one of the things that people in my district have talked to are concerned about renters are that there isn't any kind of rent stabilization here in Ojai. And so there's constantly this risk of, I could be priced out of my home. And these are families who have yards, who their kids go to school. And we also don't have a living wage ordinance. And so renters are in a precarious situation. I think that there are lots of opportunities for different types of programs. If we stretch our ideas and stretch our minds, we could come up with a program that would pair, like other cities do, that would pair one renter with a homeowner, maybe someone who's living alone and has extra space, do background checks, make it safe, do personality analysis. I think we could do a lot for renters in this community without building more buildings.
Thank you. Michelle, you're up next. Share with us your thoughts about the rental situation.
So in Ojai, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, people spend on average 39% of their paychecks on rent. That's 9% more than what is suggested that someone should pay as a portion of their paycheck, and it's an injustice. And, you know, just again, what Rachel brought up, there is no rent stabilization in our city. I am in favor, if elected, to pass a rent stabilization ordinance. And it is my understanding that there are caveats to that, but there is room to help renters in that arena. People move to Ojai and stay here because of the way that we have preserved our open spaces. So I think when we talk about affordable housing and how we address it, it should be put to a community vote. And then that way, we implement the democratic process, which may not yield the result an individual may want. But then at least there is consensus and democracy and how we handle this.
Thank you. And Leslie, we'll wrap up with you on this question about the rental market.
Okay. So once again, I'm going to hearken back to ADUs. I'm going to hearken back to the square footage, which is allowed, which is 1,200 square feet, which is bigger than the house that I bought. So that actually can be built, and it can accommodate families. I grew up in something that was much less than that. So I think we also need to change what our idea around, you know, how we live is. Are they single-family dwellings? So that is sort of the first point. The second point is there is rent stabilization. There is rent control in California. It does not apply to single-family dwellings, but it does apply to apartments. And that is limited by the state of California. So there is that. You know, I just believe if we think differently about the kinds of houses and living environments that we have, we can figure this out. In a minute, I pretty much said what I can say.
Thank you. Rachel, you're up first on this next question, and we'll shift to cannabis. So the question is, back on October 11th, the City Council postponed any further consideration of an ordinance allowing the three dispensaries to relocate to the commercial zone and possibly open consumption lounges. They figured they would let the incoming council make these decisions. Do you think this was the right course of action? And if you were elected, how will you vote when the matter comes before you in January?
Yes. I think it was the right measure to let the next council come up or to make this decision. If elected, how I will vote for this when that comes up? I think there are two different ways of looking at this issue. One is if we're talking about having smoking lounges... One is if we're talking about having smoking lounges. Or having places where people are using edibles, then we're also going to need extra security. We're going to need ways to, to check people who are driving away. I think it opens up a whole can of worms in terms of safety of the community. If we're talking about dispensaries, like where people get their medication. Then I think that's something a little bit different. Then that falls under the category of pharmacy. And so I think we need more, we just need to, to spell out a little bit more in detail. What, what we are going to welcome into our downtown area. I think that there's space for new businesses and I think that it needs to, that it needs, we need to be really thoughtful. About the, the space that we have.
Thank you, Rachel. Randy, uh, do you think it was the right decision to postpone the decision? And how would you vote in January if you were elected?
Yeah, my, my records pretty much is pretty clear. I'm absolutely against moving cannabis lounges downtown. I'm, I just don't, I don't see the, uh. I, I, I don't, I don't see any good coming from it. You know, we passed the cannabis. Ordinance. And I think one, I, I think one of the mistakes we made is we opened it up to three. It actually started out as, as a medicinal, as a, a entity that was to take care of people that need it medically. And then all of a sudden it grew to edibles and now all of a sudden we're pushing. That we want lounges so that we can get more people in, get them higher faster and get them out the front door sooner. And, and I agree with, with Rachel on that. Do we really want to take. An, another mind-altering. Entity and provide an opportunity for people to consume it and then put them in automobiles and put them out on our streets. I just don't, I don't think that's wise and I don't think it's purposeful.
Thank you, Randy. Leslie, your position on the city council postponing any decision and what, how would you vote in January? Regarding allowing consumption lounges.
Thank you. Um, I was actually at that city council meeting where that ordinance, where that discussion came up. And so the, the way that that ended was that each of the council people. Would go ahead and do a pros and cons and pass that on to the new council. So I would want to look at those for, you know, because people have been, the. Previous council members have been thinking about this deeply. So that's the first due diligence I would do. As far as equity goes, I have to say that. The, the speakers, the cannabis dispensary owners who spoke were incredibly persuasive. And it's not that they persuaded because, you know, they were using, you know, language. You know, that was persuasive, but they made the point very clearly. That we allow this for alcohol, which is much, much, much more destructive. And that they are a part of the community and should be seen as well. So I would need.
Thank you, Leslie. Going to have to stop you there. Catherine, same question to you. Should it have been postponed and how would you vote on consumption lounges?
Um, yeah, I think, I think I'm glad that it was postponed because to, to be fair. This is something that needs thorough consideration. I understand as business owners, they obviously want to move their business forward as fast as possible. And I can understand that, but. And I understand the perspective of, I mean, how many wineries and breweries do we have just downtown? But then it begs the question, do we need more spaces where. People could come out compromised and not be able to work, you know, operate their vehicles properly. How would you monitor that? There's so many, there's, there's so much more beyond just. You know, can you let us do this? There's, there are a lot of logistics that are wrapped up in it and it really does need to be. To be looked into. I mean, what, what precautions are we taking for the, for the wineries and breweries though? So i- it's really something that needs to be looked into in more detail.
Thank you. And Michelle, we'll wrap up with your view on consumption lounges.
Um, I do think we need to take an equitable approach to it, to this, to Catherine's point, there are wineries and breweries in town. So there, uh, there needs to be a thoughtful approach. It is my understanding that our, our residents are in favor of this. I think we, we do need to regulate the businesses and there are city models that are doing this responsibly. I know Port Hoinimi. Recently, uh, opened up to this. And, you know, it, it's something that we can make a, a lot of money off of. So it is something that I think we should thoughtfully consider and look at the recommendations that were made in this council.
Okay, thank you. And we'll begin the next question with Leslie. Let me unmute you. On the ballot this November is Measure L in Ojai, which repeals. The Measure A, which created the mayor's position. Basically, my understanding is. Measure L, amend the municipal code to repeal Measure A and return to five elected city council members. And then the mayor would just wrote, be rotated among the council members. It eliminates the elected mayoral position. What is your position on this? And if this comes to pass, do you have thoughts about how to implement this transition?
I support it, actually. I support going back to five council members with a rotating mayor. I know the history of, of how that, how the original measure got on the ballot. I know the intent behind it. And I think I've, from all of the council people that I have talked to on all sides of the question. It was a much more collegial and productive. Situation when there was some sort of agreed and understood background amongst all of the. Participants in the council. So I think that you see what we have now really is, is. Somebody coming in who, who, there is great division and divisiveness on that council. Right now, and I think that it's a lack of not having worked together, not having compromised together. Not understanding each other. And, and I don't think it makes for a cohesive council, I have to say.
Thank you. Michelle, share with us your view about Measure L. Would you vote for that? And also anything about implementing it if it passes?
Um, I, I, I'm not in, in favor of it. I, I believe the, the separating of the districts. Has fostered greater. Communication between the candidates and their districts. And I mean, you know, we kind of live in these sort of micro communities anyway. So I think it really allows us to become really familiar and intimate with our neighbors. I do, I do want to address though, there has been a lot of confusion over. Where people, what district they belong to. So it, it really. It addresses the fact that we need, just need to better communicate, you know, how, how districts work. And I, and I believe that the people should have the right to elect their mayor.
Thank you. Catherine, same question to you about Measure L. We, going back to. The five-member council and a mayor that rotates among them.
If, um, so it was interesting because when I first heard about this, it was kind of presented a little bit differently. As far as like the council choosing who the mayor would be and that would be the mayor. If. It, it's a five, if, if it's five equal seats and the. Mayor is rotated. I don't, I don't personally see a problem with that. I, I want to see. Whatever helps our. Helps our city council work better together. One of the things about the districts though, is I like the idea of districts. But I would love to see everyone be able to vote in every district. Because I feel like there's people that we connect with outside of our districts as well. And to limit people to just who their neighbors happen to be. Seems a, a little limiting, but I think if we can have a cohesive council, that's most important.
Thank you. Rachel, same question to you, your position on Measure L and any thoughts about how it might be implemented, the transition?
Yeah, so I, it's my understanding that this was already voted on twice and that the voters in Ojai. Chose to keep the mayor and keep the mayor as an elected position. And my understanding is also that one of the reasons why is because there were. Council members who ran unopposed. So it, 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 so we have these council members who are running unopposed. Who are filling in the position of mayor. And so it, it led to a leadership imbalance. And the voices of the people weren't represented. So, so that is, that is my understanding. And that is the reason why I'm in favor of, 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 or I'm in favor of, of, of keeping the mayoral position. However, I would like to see a slight change in that a mayor really can't do much in two years. And so I think it should be a four-year position, just like other council members. And that's, that's what I thought, my thoughts on it.
Thank you. And Randy, we'll wrap up with you on this question.
Yeah, I've, I've been through both of it. I came on with an unelected mayor. In a rotational mayor and, and I thought it was fine. I've seen the divisiveness that was created when we went to elected, uh, electing a mayor. I've seen the, um, it's, I, I, I mean, how much money these mayors are spending? I mean, Johnny Johnson, I think his first time, he spent ten thousand. I think Betsy last, or two years ago spent fifteen or seventeen and she's already up to twenty thousand. And I don't understand why we want all that money in politics. It is confusing. You know, and I have vacillated for it and against it and, and for it and because I see the benefits of a district. It's never been penciled out as to how a district will operate when it comes to funding. The actual city and are we creating imbalances by doing it? So there's a, a lot of work that still has to be done. But as of right now, I would be, I would go back to. All of us running.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, Michelle, next question. We haven't talked about the economy yet. And there's a balance that's always, or maybe I should say tension in Ojai between the economy and tourism. So how would you encourage more local business versus tourism? And are there any models that you have as far as ideas to implement your ideas?
Um, yes, again, I think. Tourism needs to be looked at through the lens of, of supporting three kind of core things. And it's our quality of life, supporting our workers and also supporting our, our businesses. And on the subject of tourism, I do think there, there's a bit of. Contention and insecurity with the, the tourism market. I think we need to begin to look at other ways to expand our budget. One of the ideas that is being floated is the, a transfer tax that would be added. It's a one percent. Tax that would be added to sales of homes over a million dollars. And then that can be then put into a fund that we as a community decide how it is that we want to spend it. That could be unaffordable housing. It could be on sustainability measures. So just really diversifying the ways in which we receive revenue.
Thank you. Rachel, your thoughts about improving or encouraging more local business and how does that fit in with tourism?
Yeah, I think there are so many opportunities for bringing local businesses here, especially the. The, uh, Brian, the area over and by Bryant and Fulton. There's, um, these are zoned for manufacturing, they're zoned for. Commercial businesses. I think that there are so many ways that we could attract people who are wanting to start something. And then we could have ownership in that and that could be a part of our Ojai story. Also, I think bringing green businesses here and finding ways to, to work with. With people who are really doing innovative things. When I think about economic development, I'm a business owner. I've had a business for seventeen years. I think about it also in terms of intellectual property. What kinds of ideas are we generating here? So supporting more artists, supporting our existing local businesses and helping them really thrive. By offering them support and resources.
Thank you. Randy, your thoughts or ideas about encouraging more local business and how does that fit in with tourism?
You know, I think the first thing that, that we need is a true assessment of the businesses that we have in this community. And actually identify and put them into distinct areas as to are they tourism-based? Are they, you know, what, what part of the economy do they feed or help sustain? We've never done that. The other thing that we have to look at is, is a council or a future council is the fact that we have a limited staffing. So we're going to have to look at doing more with community groups, ad hoc committees. And things of that nature to actually to perform these studies and to acknowledge what we can and what we can't do. Right now, I believe that, well, look at how well we came out of COVID. You know. We have, our reserves are built up. Probably a million, million and a half more than when we started prior to COVID. And that's good public policy that this council has created and sustained. Businesses are going to come and, and is this. I'm going to run out of time.
Yep, thank you. Leslie, same question to you, your ideas about encouraging more local business and how do you balance that with tourism?
I, I definitely think that we need to diversify our businesses. And I, I, I agree with Randy that we really need to know what businesses we have here. And try to track, you know, how are they involved in tourism? In what ways do they get revenue and which ways do we get revenue? I also am of course a huge proponent of eco-tourism. So very briefly, I believe that there is a way to. Sort of take the head of exploitative tur- of tourism and turn it towards more enriching and nourishing of the community. By, by using the things that are, are holistic and true to this community. Whether that is, you know, teaching people how to have drought gardens, things like that. So taking the tourism that we have and changing it from the feeling that we are being exploited. To a feeling whereby they are, they are committed and engaged in our community. And we are committed, engaged with them.
Thank you. Catherine will wrap up this question with you. Your ideas about encouraging more business?
So again, I always, I always say I feel a bit like a broken record because. Our cost of living and our housing situation is so impactful. On how residents can contribute to our businesses. A lot of people who live here aren't able to patronize some of our businesses regularly. Just because it's so expensive and so many people are living at a cost burden. If we can remove that cost burden, people are able to now. Invest and contribute to their own community. And kind of touching on what Rachel said, it would be great for some businesses to come into Bryant Circle. But how many people can actually afford to open a business here? Because you're opening a business and then where are you going to live? So these are things that, that are work in conjunction to one another. Likewise, offering workforce housing would be great because not only would they be contributing to the economy by possibly renting or purchasing a home. But then they could live or work in the city as well. And that would contribute financially to the city.
Thank you. Rachel, you'll be up first on this next question. Candidates, this is not a policy question. This is one that'll hopefully give us a little insight into how you look at the future. Rachel, what would you like Ojai to look and feel like in ten years? What kinds of housing or businesses, the feel of the community? Share with us what you think is sort of the optimum view of Ojai in ten years.
Yeah, I, my, my view, my optimum view of Ojai. Is the community that I envisioned when I. When I had my daughter and, and my daughter is no longer with us. And, and so one of the reasons why I'm running is to create that for the children of this community. And what that looks like is that we are a community of, I get emotional talking about it. That we are a community of people who care about one another and that we care about the earth. And so my vision is that we are net zero. And that we have new trees planted for shade, that we are off single-use plastics, that we have created. Opportunities for our children and our families to come together, that we've created more opportunities for young families. To come here and, and attracted them with high-paying jobs and with opportunities. To grow their businesses, to grow their families. And, and also that we protect those who are already here, like our seniors.
Thank you. Randy, what do you think Ojai should look like and feel like in ten years? And that's housing, business, community?
Well, um, real quick, I said this at the Historic Preservation Commission the other night. And that's, that slogan, let's keep Ojai, Ojai. And, and to me, Ojai starts with its people. You know, we are a kind, considerate and engaged community. We respect one another. We want the best for one another and we all want the best for our community. So it starts there. It starts, it starts at home. The second thing is, you know, when I think of Ojai and I think of where we can go, I, I envision a recreation center. That is new and updated and provides facilities for my grandchildren and for future grandchildren and, and children. I'd like to see a local swimming pool. I'd like to see more walking and more riding of bikes. Uh, I'd like to see more walking and more riding of bikes. Um, and for us to figure out how to reduce our traffic and, and uh. And, you know, uh, we have a lot of policies in place. We need to stop trying to reinvent the wheel and start looking at the wheel we have and make it.
Thank you, Randy. Leslie, uh, what are your thoughts about ten years from today?
Ten years from today, um. I want the Ojai that cherishes and protects its people and its place. Including the flora and the fauna and the land. I want us to have an ecosystem that nourishes this community and a relationship based on that. Based on trust and reciprocity. I want a place where forty-three percent of us are not housing insecure. I want to solve that problem. Um, I want to have us energy net zero. I would love to see a community microgrid. I think that would be wonderful. Um, I would like to see us. Upscale our broadband so that we could potentially bring those kinds of IT businesses here. Um, but mostly to Randy's point, um, we are a people that cherish the place. And I think that that's something we hold on to and we bring with us as we move into the next decade.
Thank you. Catherine, uh, same question to you. Uh, in one minute, what do you think?
Um, I would love to see an Ojai that is more accessible to families. Um, that sees our public schools more reinvigorated. Um, and I really want to show that we are a very. Close-knit. Community, um, and that our space is important to us. And though we want to share it with people, we also want to preserve um the beauty that we have. Um, in my perfect world, I would love to see. Uh, the current Ojai Unified School District as another youth center. Um, with like tutoring rooms, maybe a boys and girls pro- or a, a big brother, big sister program out of there. Workho- workforce housing for um district employees above it. Um, I think it could be a really good opportunity and could bring so much to us and I just wanna. See those family values return.
Thank you. Michelle will wrap up this question with you. What's your thoughts?
I love this question. Um, it's one, the Ojai that I see in ten years is one that is. Shaded by native trees and um has permeable surfaces. That there are multiple ways to get to your destination that don't rely on fossil fuels. It has expanded bikeways and pathways that are accessible to our seniors and um to pedestrian traffic. It's creating microgrids. It's um up, uh, it's an updated stormwater and wastewater infrastructure. It's an updated library. Um. It's a, a place where we have a public pool and places where our youth can, can enjoy. Um, the natural bounty and the beauty that we live in. Um, and it's just a, a, a city that runs on, on clean power and that. Um, just and capitalizes on the extraordinary amount of talent and expertise that is here to solve. Um, many of the issues that we're facing, including affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, you'll be up first, uh, next question. Let's go back now a little bit in the weeds. So. Uh, council meetings and governance, uh, and share with us your thoughts about if you're on the city council. Are there ideas you have to make meetings more efficient? Do you have ideas about engaging Ojai residents in the meetings, policies? Any thoughts about changing the way we are governed?
I think, um, I think most importantly, I think accessibility and transparency in our government is gonna be really important. Um, a lot of this, the people that I've spoken with, uh, talk about, I, I, some people didn't even know. All of who's running for city council right now. Um, people don't necessarily know when the meetings are or that they're available, available. Via Zoom and being able to disseminate that information um more widely would be wonderful. Um, and I mean, I think the interactions that have been at the city council meetings and I've been to a couple of the big ones. You know, are as good as they're gonna get and people are invited, but I just think bringing that awareness that that's. That's available to them. People need to know that they have a voice and that they're entitled to have that voice and to be heard. And I, I think that's the most important thing is just making people feel like they can access our government. And be a part of it. I think that's something that we could do a little bit better moving forward.
Thank you. Leslie, uh, your ideas about improving the efficiency of council meetings? Are there ideas you have to engage residents? In the meetings and in the overall running of the government?
Yes, so um, I, I think a lot of it is about communication and being able to communicate. What, what is on the agenda and what the real issues behind it are. And I think that that actually has a technological solution. I mean, there needs to be a place where people go and the kinds of information that they need is clearly stated. Um, you know, I'm a great believer in flow charts, uh, and ways to do more research. I also believe potentially we should have some sort of platform that where people can, um. They can put their comments up and i- it goes on to a running list. So Wiki if you want or something like that. Where people can see what other people have said um before the actual meeting. So that there's a platform built where there is a response. You go here, you see the issue and then you're able to respond to it. And that's available for everyone to see. It's available for the, the council people to review. Um, and also get feedback on how clear.
Thank you, Leslie.
Issues were. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, same question to you about improving the efficiencies.
Um, I'm with Catherine in um addressing accessibility. I was thinking a bit about this. I, I think. Sometimes the process of even just coming to City Hall can be really intimidating. Um, there, you know, people don't, when you're going there for the first time, it's really unclear how to even submit. Um, a card for a public comment or what a public comment period is or um how it is that these meetings run. Um, I, I would like to really address, you know, maybe having a workshop or. Times where council members can really guide the community through the process of civic engagement. Um, I, I would also like to increase how it is that we think about receiving feedback from the community. I was actually just thinking about this today, how. It would be kind of a fun idea even just to have like drop boxes all around town where people can. Submit comments or thoughts on, and, and it could be an informal thing, um, where we begin to start that dialogue. Um, with the community and I'm also making sure that we o- offer information in a streamlined way and more than um just one language.
Thank you. Randy, your thoughts about improving efficiencies and engaging the people?
You know, I think the, the most important thing we have to look at a council meeting is it's our business meeting. For the community. Um. And by stating that is um on our agenda, our discussion items that we need to review. Um, we need to take public input. We need to then um have a discussion in-house with our fellow members. And generally what we try and do in that moment is make a decision. What I'd like to see in the future is that we um keep the same process. We create the agenda. We disseminate it through. Um, all of our channels. We bring it to council. We open it up and get um staff's input. Then we open it up for questions from the council members. Then we open it up to the public. Then we bring it back to council for a discussion. And then what we do is we re-agendize it or we continue it. Till the next council meeting so that we can receive public input, so that we can better understand. Differences between council members and other entities within the community.
Thank you, Randy. Rachel will wrap up with you as far as your ideas to improve efficiency and engage the community.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this question. I have a marketing background, um, and in nonprofit work. And I, I love the idea, first of all, I think that Randy's right. The, the meetings are business meetings. And so a lot of people don't want to sit through those meetings or watch the replays of them. But what if we, what if we made our website more interactive? So that we have video content that goes over like small little excerpts of what was happening. Where we have a regular communication strategy and plan, a marketing strategy and plan. To bring our, uh, all of our residents into some of these conversations in bite-sized ways. Ways that they can understand without any hidden agenda, without any sides, kind of like what the League of Women, Women Voters does here. Um, and so I think having a section on the website that is. That is, that gives information in, in concise ways where they can look at it later or they could go and do their own research. And also taking more comment cards just in our uh before and after meetings.
Thank you, Rachel. Uh, we've reached uh the point where we're going to begin closing statements. Before we do though, I'm gonna just take a moment to share my screen to show the audience. Where the uh two districts are. So District One, looks like it's pretty much centered around the middle of uh the community. And District Two is this purplish one off to the right. So, but even if you don't live in one of these two districts, I just encourage you to remember that. All of these candidates from every district represent you and they are doing the best or they should be doing the best they can. For all residents of the community. With that, we're gonna go ahead and begin our closing statements. We're gonna go in the reverse order of our opening statements. Randy, you'll be up first. Whenever you're ready, you'll have one minute.
So first of all, I'd like to thank you, David, um, for leading the discussion tonight. And I'd love, like to thank all the other candidates that are running, um, Rachel and Catherine. Um, uh, I appreciate the fact that you're stepping up and, and, and are committed to this community as, as I am. Um, you know, like I said, I started. This adventure or this journey twenty-eight years ago. Um, and I have zero regrets. In fact, I'm asked all the time, why do you do it? Um, and I do it because I'm committed to this community. I do it because. I actually have fun. It's in, it's so. It's so interesting to be involved with how a community works, how we interact with the rest of the cities in the county. There's just so much that most of us as citizens don't know. So I value that and I appreciate it. And I look forward to the opportunity in four more years. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Rachel, when you're ready.
Yes, thank you so much, David, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. Um, you know, Randy, I appreciate all of your service. You have experience that Catherine and I don't have. And at the same time, Ojai is changing. We have changing needs. That we've never faced before with climate and with economic challenges, all the things that we talked about today. And I have a different kind of experience. I have experience in innovative ideas and creativity. I have experience in collaborative processes, bringing people together. Um, and, and so I think that, that regardless of what happens, I think that. That we have a core group of people here tonight who are going to step up and do what's right for Ojai. And so for anyone voting, I just invite you to think about what kind of leadership you want. This is a game-changing election and I'm grateful to be a part of it.
Thank you, Rachel. Our next candidate, Catherine.
Um, excuse me, thank you, David, and thank you, the League of Women Voters, and, and thank everyone who's been. Able to watch and hung in with us. Um, I really appreciate it and I really appreciate having my voice heard. Um, and likewise, I want to hear your voices. I want to listen to our community. I want to hear what they have to say. And I want to be representative of that. It means very much to me. Um. Growing up here, living here for over thirty years, raising a family here. I feel like I have a, a unique perspective to be able to bring to city council. And um, I would like to share that with everyone. I feel like I am able to view. Issues not just from, you know, one perspective as, you know, a resident, but as a mother as. You know, as previously working outside the home. And I would like to share that with everyone and I really would love to be the representative. For our community, for our district.
Thank you. Michelle, when you're ready.
Thank you so much, David, League of Women Voters, and everyone here for tossing uh your hat in the ring. It's, it's brave, it's hard. And I really commend each and every one of you. Um. I, I promise that if I am elected to listen to all points of view diligently. And pursue all potential solutions and collaboratively work with my fellow council members. My vision for Ojai is one that prioritizes climate resiliency in the form of proactive and science-based responses. A vote for me is a vote for our future, for proactive solutions, for collaboration and a thriving Ojai. I invite each and every one of you to come meet with me. I consider this a conversation, a collaboration with the greater community. I will be at Sunday's Farmer's Market from ten to twelve on um Matilah. And um you can also reach me uh via my website, michelleforojai.com. And if you are in District One. And if anything I said resonated with you and you feel inspired, I ask for your vote this November eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next candidate, Leslie.
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you once again to the League of Women Voters and to all of the candidates who, who are running. Um, I think that I'm gonna close with my experience because I think we are in a pivotal time right now and um. It really does require some experience and some, some deep thought. So my background is as, is a science and is a science educator. So I have worked for the National Science Foundation as a project manager. I've been a college instructor. Some of the courses that I have taught is teaching science in the K three classroom. The science and engineering behind clean energy and exploring the Berkshires, which really was hydrogeology. Um, not the Topatopas, but it was the Berkshires as well. I was a producer at PBS and KQED. Teaching people how to tell the stor- their own stories of social justice and in some cases, social injustice. Um, as far as municipal experience, uh, I have been on a town council. I have been on a school board. And I have been on the planning board and I would like to bring all of that to Ojai for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates. Uh, make a couple of quick announcements. So. One, this is being recorded. A video will be available on the League's website. You go to LWVventura county dot org. Click on candidate forums and you can scroll down and see all of our uh forums. That includes for Ojai, we have a forum up there for the mayor. And also the Ojai Unified School District as well as others around the county. Thank you to all the candidates. It is a very long and hard job and it's, uh, impacts you, it impacts your family. So here at the League, we appreciate all of you doing your part for democracy. This is our final forum for this cycle and I wanna uh take special time to thank our president, Kathy Morgan, who has been so. Instrumental in uh helping the League register new voters and hosting these forums, Pat Essick, who runs our voter services. Cheryl Collard uh works with me on the uh format and questions. Maddie Park, our timer. Wayne Morgan has been invaluable and Elizabeth Moore is another person who's helped us with our timing. So thank you to all of them. I'm David Marin with the League of Women Voters with a couple of quick reminders. You should have received your ballots by now. Every registered voter has mailed a ballot. You can return those ballots through the mail or at a drop box. The important thing to do when you return your ballot that way is to make sure you sign. The outer envelope. You can also vote at a voting center as they open up. There are many around the county. You don't have to vote at the one nearest you. If you work in Oxnard or Portway, Nimi, you can vote at one of those voting centers. A suggestion though is take your ballot with you when you go to vote at a voting center. That eliminates some confusion and problems and you could turn it in and then vote uh using one of the machines. You can also visit the League's website for more information. You can visit votersedge.org slash C A. Put in your address and find information on all of the candidates, both local and statewide and congressional. So there are many resources for you and you can even track your ballot by going to wheresmyballot.sos.ca.gov. So a lot of ways to help you vote, but the most important thing is exercise your right to vote. Make sure you uh return that ballot to our vote at a voting center. So with that, thank you to all. Thank you to Ojai residents. Thank you to the community. I'm David Marin, the League saying good night.
Thank you.